I'll call this a motion to the Council to order, Monday, February 26, 2018. First item for tonight is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to that effect?
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion?
Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero. The agenda is approved. Now down to the invocation, Councilmember Roof.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for another beautiful day you've given us. We pray for our county, state, and nation concerning the mass shootings going on everywhere. And we ask that you give our leaders the wisdom to make the necessary changes to protect innocent people. We pray that hearts will change and people will look to you for guidance in their lives. And Lord, now we just ask that you guide and direct us as we make decisions concerning our county. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Mr. Roof. We're now down to the approval of minutes from the regular meeting, February 12, 2018. Do we have a motion?
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the minutes from our regular meeting,
February 12, 2018, as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Those minutes are approved. No public presentations for tonight. First public comment session. Mrs. Davis.
We have eight speakers tonight. First, Ms. Wendy Bracewell, speaking on rezoning.
Good evening again. So I'm not... Thank you. Thank you. Sorry. I'm not going to repeat everything I said last time. I'm just going to kind of pick back up where we left off. So I apologize for all the new folks in the room. Wanted to just elaborate on a couple of the points that we made last time. I know that I had passed out to all the council members a document that had a lot of the possibilities and the different things that we might want to do with the property. And I just wanted to clarify that any of those things that were on there were on there in support of a wedding venue. So where it said there might be a possibility that we would need zoning for, say, coin laundry, it wasn't that we wanted to open up a coin laundromat or anything like that. It's just that if we had lodging there and people needed a place, we might want to have a couple of washers or dryers. So it was really the most extensive view into the zoning that we could possibly have, you know, just to make sure that we had anything and everything checked that might be needed from a bank perspective as well as a zoning perspective. So that's the first part of it. The second thing that I wanted to make sure everybody knew, and I brought support with me tonight for the first time, so you're going to hear some other people talk after me, and we're also going to talk about slightly different things. But from an overall concept, for this to be supported and for it to make the kind of money that we need to make to support the Robinson House, which is a large house, needs a lot of work and comes with a large parcel, and it really does have to be a nice, top-notch venue. I know there's been a lot of discussion about the fact that, you know, okay, you could possibly do this and just throw a few tents up or do A or do B and, you know, start small. That won't work in this situation for us. And the reason that that won't work is because we have to generate enough income to cover the renovations needed for the house, the ongoing cost of the house, and those types of things. I had prepared a PowerPoint to give you some images of what we wanted to do, just some concepts. Chris Stone's going to talk a little bit later, our architect and designer, and he'll show you some actual boards. I didn't know that I couldn't share the PowerPoint, but I believe that you said you can pass that out to everybody so that you can look and see what type of a barn we're talking about building, and just some pictures of some weddings in an event venue that are like that. Last and not least, I just wanted to thank everybody that came tonight. I've got a bunch of people lined up to speak to you guys just to give you a little bit more information about what we're doing so you can see some of the good for the community. I really do think this is going to be a great thing for Fairfield County if we pass it. It's not huge and monumental, but it's a small start and an incremental step in the right direction out on the west side of the county. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Tony Bracewell, speaking on the rezoning.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tony Bracewell. I'm Wendy's husband. Just wanted to add my support to this, let everybody know that my wife has my full backing, and hopefully it's something that we can do together. I don't know if the croaky voice actually allows you to realize that. I'm obviously not from Jenkinsville or South Carolina. But this is a real opportunity, I think, to save some of the heritage of this county. I know there's question marks about heritage at all times, but it's still, I think, something that should be maintained. I also think, need to point out that this is not just a whim on behalf of my wife or myself. I've been living in North America now for five years. And I basically got married at Robinson House. In fact, in 28 days, four years ago. So for us, it's more than just, you know, a business idea. This is something that we think will add to the community, you know, will allow us to help keep things local, keep it integral to the communities that we've grown to love and be part of. And I just hope that you can understand that. That's all that our interests are. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Tiffany Taylor, speaking on rezoning.
Hey, I'm Tiffany Taylor. I'm a specialty contractor in South Carolina. I am currently restoring the inside and the outside of the Robinson House. I have a lot of subcontractors and general contractors that are being brought in, so it's providing jobs. And that's my point in being here, is we currently have a lot of people, and we will after it becomes an event venue, still provide jobs for me and other contractors with different specialties. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. John Gleason, speaking on rezoning.
I'm John Gleason. I'm Wendy Bracewell's father, and I just want to say that I support what she's trying to do here. My family is always going back a significant time has been involved with historic preservation. My dad was on the Maryland Historic Trust Board of Directors, and we've had a lot of experience with historic properties. And this Robinson House is a real gem of a house, and, you know, it goes back to the first half of the 19th century here in Fairfield County, and is a notable structure that certainly needs to be utilized to a good use. And I think that a wedding venue is an excellent use for it. And I just appreciate y'all's support in getting zoning, which will allow for that use to take place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Alice McLaurin, speaking on rezoning.
I'm Alice McLaurin, and I'm here to support Wendy and her efforts to have her property rezoned for this wedding venue. And I'm a longtime friend and neighbor of Wendy and her family since we lived in Lowburn. And she's just this skilled, creative woman that can really bring this vision that she has to a successful reality for your county. And I fully support her and her efforts.
Thank you.
Next, Chris Stone, speaking on rezoning.
My name is Chris Stone. I'm the principal architect of StoneCraft Studio 3 and also with LS3P Architects in Greenville. Been working with Ms. Bracewell for the last several months, working on the master planning of this property, as well as the Robinson House renovation in the back portion of this, and making sure that we keep with the same architectural language and heritage that Robert Mills would have afforded this house when he would have designed this addition. As you can tell from the rendering that you're looking at, it's an architectural sketch of the addition on the back. Is it appropriate if I approach the panel so I can show, I point out a few things?
To turn these around and show the other side, that's fine, but we can't have interaction. Thank you.
That's fine. I'll speak to them from a distance, but we'll show one thing.
This is the elevation study, and for later review, they actually have the plans of the new addition that will go in the back. This is all related to the wedding chapel addition. This is the overall master plan, and here are the individual elements that we will be adding in much further detail.
I'll be happy to go through that in greater detail. But there has been considerable amount of study that has gone on on how to reuse some of the existing elements that are on the site. There are a number of barns there, and the reuse and the restructuring of some of these barns or components thereof, and the new construction of elements throughout would be in keeping with the existing facilities. So we would not deviate in any way from the original design of the home or the elements thereof. Wedding chapel construction or design is something we tend to do quite a bit of now. So we have a little bit of experience doing that. Anything else that would be added to that would be in phases. The first phase, obviously, is the addition to the back of the house, and then the idea is to add the wedding barn right after that. Any questions that I can answer, because there's a lot of information out there?
We can't do question and answer in public comment time, but we thank you very much.
All right. Fair enough.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Jeff Schaefer, speaking on the new hospital.
Good evening, Council. Quick on that button. The Bracewells are my neighbors, and you know me. I want them to have that. Don't you be giving them a hard time. Okay, so now that that's out of the way, we're going to have a new hospital. I understand, being built an emergency room. I'm not familiar with it. I don't, I get the paper, I hear people talking, but I don't know that all of us understand exactly how it's going to operate, what it's going to do for the community, what it's going to cost us, what benefit it is. I'd love to hear that at some other time, but just want you to know that that's not common knowledge, or I'm just one of those people that doesn't have that common knowledge, and I think that a lot of us suffered that problem in the county. And then speaking about hospitals, I just want to make this statement. Since I've got two minutes left, these people just took, you know, 10 seconds to tell you what they want. Why don't you give me an extra five minutes? I'll fill you in. The hospital that we have now, I don't know what you're doing with it or what's going to happen to it. I've been disappointed with it. And I'll tell you a quick story. Beth Jenkins, who's not here tonight, but she can come and verify this, her husband, John, went to the hospital a couple of weeks ago to get stitches in his finger. Logjam machine shot back and tore his finger up a little bit, needed stitches, went to the hospital. He was there three hours. They did not put stitches in his hand. They told him they couldn't put stitches in his hand. Why did that happen? I don't know. But somebody should explain that to the public. You have an emergency room, you have doctors, you can't put stitches in a guy's hand? We got a real serious problem. That's a joke. But I'm not going to criticize anymore, but that was a criticism, and I'm finished criticizing. Now, last comment I want to make, and I'll leave early. Why don't we fill in the blanks sometimes when we give these sessions of what we're talking about in an ordinance? It's very nonspecific when we talk about an ordinance. I look and I go, what are you talking about? What, you know, what's the rest of the information? It seems like we're either hiding information, or, and I know you want to be transparent, but isn't there more information we can give when we talk about an ordinance? If so, I'd appreciate hearing that. And with that, I'll say, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on the hospital.
Randy Bright, District 1, Ridgeway. Jeff kind of gave me a segue, at least into one segment of my discussion tonight. And that is, hold on to your seats, to give kudos to our county council and our government team. All of you saw in the newspaper recently the grand opening slash shovel ceremony for the new hospital. It looked like everybody was dressed for hard work, but all the hard work had been done before this. And let me give you, it's almost like a real-life game show, what the county council decided to do. Behind door number one was close the hospital altogether. That would have been, including the emergency room, that'd have been catastrophic for this, for this community. It meant more deaths that could have been prevented, health care down the tubes, and economic development. You might as well forget that if you don't have at least an emergency room. Behind door number two, a little better option, but it would count it to keep the current hospital open beyond a certain time would have cost millions more in dollars per year than we are currently spending or will spend with the new hospital. Behind door number three was the brilliant resolution that came to pass with this group's hard work, obviously the hospitals also, and LifePoint Providence. Here's what we get, Jeff and the rest of the community. We get out of this deal a brand-new, state-of-the-art emergency room with all the peripheral support departments connected to the highest-rated hospital in the Midlands. Not only that, through their resources, we will, the idea is, is to bring specialists to our community that we don't currently have, and more doctors, and expansion room to grow for this facility. And what did it cost us? Actually, we gained money out of this. It cost us the normal million dollars a year that we currently pay, but we also gain over $400,000 a year in property taxes because the new hospital is a for-profit where the previous one is not. Not only that, we saved two, maybe $3 million a year more than what it would have taken to keep the old hospital open. Brand-new hospital at a much lower cost, keep jobs in the community, keep economic development in the community. I mean, you guys couldn't have done better. And that's coming from me. So thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
That concludes Segment 1.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Davis. We have one public hearing tonight. That's to authorize Fairfield County to convey all or portion of county-owned real property located at 355 Commerce Boulevard, Ridgeway, South Carolina, 29130, with TMS number 184-00-00-071-000 to CS Industrial LLC. We'll open this public hearing at 6:18, February 26, 2018. Mrs. Davis, did anyone sign to speak on this?
No one signed to speak.
All right. That said, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, also at 6:18, February 26, 2018. We're now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Item A is third and final reading on ordinance number 692.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. A motion has been made and properly seconded to approve ordinance number 692 and to provide for zoning reclassification from RD1 to B1 for 18.22 acres owned by Wendy Bracewell, tax map number 138-00-02-045-000. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven and zero. Third and final reading has been provided to ordinance number 692. Now down to item B, third and final reading for ordinance number 693.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded to provide third and final reading to ordinance number 693. This is to amend the county land management ordinance to provide for the zoning reclassification from R1 to RD1, .036 acres owned by Angela Young, tax map number 186-02-04-000, excuse me, -007-000. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven and zero. Third and final reading has been provided to ordinance number 693. First reading by title only of ordinance number 691. This is an ordinance by Fairfield County establishing procedures to expend funds appropriated by Fairfield County in its annual fiscal budget for collaborative capital works projects.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and properly seconded to provide first reading to ordinance number 691 as stated. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
All right. By a vote of six to one, first reading for ordinance number 691 is approved. We're now down to board and commission minutes. First is the Chamber of Commerce, second is Behavioral Health. We'll do these together unless anybody has any questions or specifics about either one of them. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the minutes for the Chamber of Commerce and Behavioral Health as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven and zero. Those minutes are approved. We have no board or commission appointments tonight, no old business, no new business. We're now down to the county administrator's report. Mr. Taylor.
Yes, thank you. The first item I had listed tonight was introduction of our new grants coordinator, Ms. Beverly Mosey. Unfortunately, I just got a note that she's not able to make it back from Columbia in time to be introduced, but we will bring her back at the next council meeting. She will be replacing Stephen Gaither, and moving from, some of you may know that she had previously worked in the Transit Department. Next, we have, I don't have it listed, but I wanted to also introduce Gary Hensley. He was our deputy assessor, and we have now elevated him to our assessor for Fairfield County. I think most of you probably do know Gary. Next, Ms. Tanya Jones, our Transit Director. We're going to give a report on the Transit Department as we give a report from a department head each time. We have Ms. Jones up tonight, and I want to remind everybody, we've talked a lot about health care, but this is one of our first lines of defense in keeping people healthy. Her primary duty is to take our citizens back and forth to doctor appointments to prevent them from having to go to our emergency room. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Good afternoon. Fairfield County Transit Systems' mission is to provide efficient and effective transit service to Fairfield County citizens. However, our secondary mission is to provide transportation to our Medicaid passengers in a safe and timely manner. Currently, our staff consists of the dispatcher, Tempest Pearson, operations supervisor, Ms. Elizabeth Murphy, program accountant is now vacant, and myself, two maintenance workers, eight full-time drivers, and two temporary drivers. That's the title. Our current fleet, we have one state-leased vehicle, three transit vans, one van, and eight cutaways. However, we just received two vehicles on February the 8th through the Vehicle Replacement Initiative Program by DOT. From July, excuse me, from July 2017 up until January of 2018, we currently have Medicaid rides, and all rides are covered through Medicaid broker, logistic care, who actually pays us a set fee per mile for these rides. Also, Fairfield County Transit receives a supplemental pay through DHHS, through logistic care, and the following are the amounts that we have received thus far. As you can see, in July, we received a check for $5,717.27. August was $5,279.15. September, we received $5,662.27. October, $5,438.33. And November, we've received $5,261.41. They're not coming in as monthly. They're a little bit behind, so whenever they give the disbursement of the money, then they send it to us. Currently, Fairfield County Transit can travel to Duke Medical, Charleston, MUSC, Onshur, Sumter, Lancaster, Rockview, et cetera. For our local rides, we covered the town of Windsboro, and we were able to deviate two miles off of this route. Currently, these are the fairs. The fairs were instituted back in 1985, and they haven't changed since. The fairs are $0.75, $1.01, and $1.50 to travel within the town limits of Windsboro. We do have Columbia 1X days where we are able to transport individuals who want to go to Columbia, and we're able to take them downtown to the main bus stops there, and we're also able to deviate two miles off of that route. Our Columbia 1X hours are 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. Right now, we currently also transport adult ed students as well.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Could you tell me, how many folks do we generally have, on average, going to Columbia every day, using, not the Medicaid riders, but the other folks, what you're discussing right now?
That's on the next slide.
Okay, thank you.
So from July 2017 to January 2018, our local and Columbia 1X, we've had 2,698 local rides, and we've had 252 Columbia 1X rides. For Medicaid, from July up until January, we've transported 7,571 Medicaid passengers, and last year alone, we did 13,881 Medicaid rides. The future of transit is to establish a fixed route and expand demand services to all citizens of Fairfield County. A proposal is projected for the upcoming year to purchase too many vans and hire additional drivers to meet this need. Fairfield County Transit will also need to develop a fee, which would be determined by miles traveled and identifying pickup and drop-off locations. In conclusion, we want to continue to move forward and provide safe transportation to Fairfield County. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions from council members? Mrs. Goins.
Just wanted to ask, and thank you so much for what you do. Wanted to ask, do you foresee a positive impact that our new emergency facility will have as far as the transportation and you going to Columbia for different things? Do you think that it'd have a great impact on...
I'm sure it will. We can, basically, the Medicaid riders who are receiving services that are going outside of the county may have the opportunity of selecting to come to Fairfield County for those services.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Ms. Jones, real quickly, thank you very much, but I did want to ask you, is there any, I've had folks tell me in the past that there may be some grants and things of that nature that we can take advantage of for, you know, taking kids to recreational things and different things of that nature, and some other grants that we can use to improve and expand the local ridership, which I'm glad to see looks like you're moving in that direction anyway. I very much appreciate that, because I hadn't seen any new ideas, quite frankly, come out of transit in quite a while, so I'm glad to see that you're looking into that. But do you know if there are any other grant programs that we might be able to take opportunity and advantage of to expand the ridership program as well?
I'm not aware of any, but I'd be more than happy to look into that for you.
Thank you again very much.
Thank you.
The next item I have is also in relation to transit. Periodically, we do get audited by the state, and the program is primarily grant-funded, and we have to meet the grant requirements. And this is a request of action that we have taken to committee, and committee has recommended it forward. But we do need to change or revise our alcohol and drug policy in relation to transit. Again, it's grant-driven. The audit requires us to do that, so we're bringing it to you all to have you all vote to change the policy and adopt it as provided.
All right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the revision to the alcohol and drug policy for the Transit Department. Public fairs and a policy committee recommended approval. Any discussion? Mr. Pauli?
Mr. Taylor, can you explain why that policy is different than county employee policy?
Again, this one is driven by the grant. If we're going to accept the grant from the state, we have to abide by their rules and regulations. We do have other policies for other agencies. They're not grant-funded. They're driven by whatever our, what we choose to put into place. But this one has to meet the level that the grant requirements enforce.
Thank you. Can you tell us if there's much difference? I understand that, but I still would like to be able to standardize it across the board if we can, so that you don't have one employee saying they're held to a different standard than another employee. So we know how different those are?
I would have to compare. I do not know off the top of my head how different they are.
Well, I have no problem with us moving forward with it tonight. I do think we ought to try and standardize it if we can. I just wouldn't want to get into that situation. Mr. Anderson, do you have something to add to that?
Yes, sir. I can address that. Because of transit, they go by cycle on the DOT rules. Because of their safety-sensitive employees, they are different from other employees. By law, we cannot only judge their safety-sensitive employees, and because we are a public entity, that's been the way ever since I've been here in other county governments as well.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on this item? Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Policy revisions have been approved as presented.
Next, very glad to announce that we do have four new EMTs obtaining the paramedic services. Next, very glad to announce that we do have four new EMTs obtaining the paramedic certification. As you know, paramedics, we've had a tough time keeping those jobs filled, so we're glad to announce that we have Mr. Jeremy Munn, Ms. Rose Derrick, Jonathan Evans, and Mr. Melvin Simpson coming on as newly promoted EMT, or from EMTs to paramedics. And next, we have a request for action. We had had this item on the agenda once before, and it's been before the Administration and Finance Committee with a recommended approval, but there were some questions at the last council meeting concerning raising the salaries. Again, back to our situation with paramedics keeping those positions filled. We were looking to raise the salaries so we could compete with some of our surrounding counties who, at this point, have raised theirs and continue to take some of our employees away from us. Mr. Mike Tanner is here to, again, answer any questions and do a clarification of the request.
All right, first of all, I wanted to add to the four paramedics, the four paramedics that we just got through, from EMT to paramedic. We also participated in a World EMS Symposium that was held at Charlotte, North Carolina. We had a team that competed there, and we competed in two different competitions there. And there was teams from across the world. There was teams from Slovakia, from Switzerland, from Asia, and we came in first place. Our paramedic crew of Annabath Rhodes, Nicole Simonson, and Jennifer Fitch came in first place on the hands-on challenge. I was very proud. I mean, we got the best in the world.
Where's the trophy? Messing with you.
Their trophy is they get free registration next year to the same world supposedly, so it's awesome. But we had the bragging rights, you know? And then the other competition, there was two separate ones. We beat out New York Fire Department. We beat out major, like five different services from the New York area, and we came in seventh on that. So out of 10,000 people at this convention, our guys came in first place. But now, money.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
I think due diligence has already been done. If I could, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and approve EMS for the raises they are asking for.
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded to approve the request. Do we have any discussion? All right. Do you have something, Ms. Goins?
And I want to say always, I appreciate what you do. I appreciate your passion for what you do, and you all do for us what we cannot do for ourselves, and because of you, our lives are better. But I'd like to see, maybe it's something we go back and kind of revisit how we do the raises or whatever, go back and do maybe a merit thing, or just kind of revisit in the future, because I know as years go by, cost of living is one of the things we have to do. You know, the competition is out there, there's no way around it, but I would just like to see that happen.
All right, Mr. Pauli?
Mr. Tanner, I received a call today from a citizen wanting to know y'all's work schedule, and why come you couldn't work a different schedule to eliminate overtime? Could you explain that, please?
Yeah. The way we do, we try to maximize the amount of coverage we have compared to how much employees we have, and the schedule that we work is 48/96. Our guys work 48 hours straight, and then they're off for 96 hours. What that does, that eliminates having a four-shift. So in other words, this eliminates one-third of a payroll that we'd have to pay if we didn't do this shift. We'd have to hire a whole nother shift, we'd have to hire 13 more people. So that's saving the county a million dollars right there. So the way we do it, and with our call volume, we do that 48/96 to be able to have that coverage with the minimum amount of employees for that 24/7 coverage.
Thank you. That's the way I understood it, but for the benefit of the citizens, I wanted you to
Exactly.
Put it out there. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? All right, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Seven and zero, the question's been approved. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Ms. Suzie Doscher to speak to council on a request that she has of council for the hospital, Fairfield Memorial Hospital.
Thank you for inviting me today. I would like to, before I start, I would like to recognize we have seven hospital board members here. My leadership team is here, and there's actually some foundation board members here, too, so I just want to recognize them and thank them for being here. So Fairfield Memorial Hospital opened its doors over 60 years ago to provide care to the sick of this community. There's been a lot of changes at Fairfield Memorial Hospital, and there's been a lot of changes in healthcare in general. In fact, my executive secretary, Kristy, describes all the changes she's seen in just 18 years with five CEOs. So there's been some really detrimental trends in healthcare lately. Declining reimbursement, increasing charity care, increasing bad debt, and increasing outmigration has really hurt reimbursement at all hospitals, but in particular in rural hospitals. But on the positive side, there's a lot of mergers and consolidations and collaborations like we've done with Providence Health. Also, on the positive side, we've had ongoing, consistent financial support from Fairfield County Government, which has had a huge impact. So healthcare is my compassion. I could talk for a long, long time about the history, about the trends, about what works and what doesn't work, but I won't go into that much detail tonight. As was, we talked about before, the hospital board and Fairfield County have worked for over two years to entice Providence Health to expand in our community. Rural healthcare is not a profitable business. We had a huge challenge to convince Providence Health to come into this community and convince them that there was a positive contribution margin. Providence Health and LifePoint, they're a for-profit healthcare, but their caring mission is stronger, and so they agreed to come into this community. So as Randy said, about two weeks ago, we saw the groundbreaking of the new facility. This facility is expected to open in 2018. So now our challenge is to continue to offer critically needed 24-hour emergency services until the new facility is open. Seventy-three percent of our emergency room patients are either uninsured or Medicare or Medicaid. That means 73% of our patients have no funding or funding less than the cost of the care. So we have an upfront collections process to try to balance some of that out, but the majority of people are unwilling or unable to pay for their care. Even the insured are in that category. But there's a law, a federal law called MTALA, that requires everyone that comes into our emergency room to receive a screening. It's what we commonly call an unfunded mandate. We're required to screen every person who walks into our door, but there's no guarantee for funding for those people. So I want to reiterate, this problem is not unique to Fairfield County. Hundreds of hospitals have closed in the last few years due to decline in reimbursement and burdensome debt. South Carolina's been hit especially hard, but fortunately, some of these hospitals have been saved with the mergers and acquisitions that we've described. Wallace Thompson was purchased by Spartanburg Regional. Chesterfield Hospital was purchased by McLeod. So shortly after I started working here about two and a half years ago, a consultant was hired, an accounting consultant was hired by the state to evaluate the sustainability of our hospital. That consultant said the hospital would close by April 2016. The consultant provided many improvement opportunities, but the consultant advised that there was no path for survivability of the hospital without some kind of partnership. So despite the financial struggles at Fairfield Memorial Hospital, it still has a positive impact on this community. Over 1,000 residents walk into our doors each month. If you annualize that, that equals one-half of the population of Fairfield County. There's no diagnosis, there were unable to evaluate and treat, and if needed, transfer. We take care of major illnesses, we take care of minor illnesses. When people attempt to criticize our hospital by calling in a Band-Aid station, we have a nurse that likes to say, "You're right. If you need a Band-Aid, we'll provide it to you with caring hands and heart." But we also care for more serious illnesses and injuries. We care for broken bones, strokes. Last year, we saved the lives of 28 residents who had heart attacks and came into our facility. We treat chronic illnesses such as asthma and mental health. We care for all stages of life, from birth to death. For example, we don't hold ourselves out to provide obstetrical care, but if a mother comes in pregnant and can't make it to a hospital that has a nursery, we'll deliver that baby. In fact, we did it last month, and the next day, we got a picture of the beautiful new baby from the mom. And also, those that come into the Fairfield Emergency Room tell us they're pleased with the care. Our satisfaction rate with the emergency room, nurses and physicians, is consistently over 96%. Our emergency room satisfaction survey vendor gives us an A+, both for the number of people that we survey and for the results that we get. And also, we talked about the waiting room time. The average waiting room time, or the average wait time in our hospital is two hours and eight minutes, and that's the time you walk in the door, the time you leave. Two hours and eight minutes. How does that compare to when you go to a Columbia emergency room? So to keep our emergency room open until the new Providence Health Fairfield Free Standing Emergency Room opens, we anticipate the need for a financial assistance. I understand there are many competing requests for the funding. Mike Tanner was just up here talking about that. I will say that this short-term commitment will impact the community long-term. But in addition to this financial assistance, it's in conjunction with past, present, and future evaluations of expenses at the hospital. About two years ago, we contracted with Envision to provide physician services in our emergency room for an annual savings of over $400,000. Prior to this change, I'm sure that Fairfield County was not aware of the extremely high compensation we were paying physicians to cover gaps in the schedule. I'm sure that the county was also, not you, but the population in general, was not aware of the potential gaps in emergency room coverage that were covered at the spur of the moment by family physicians in the community to make sure that the emergency room continued to function. In addition, we've evaluated numerous contracts. We evaluate staffing to meet the volumes, but unfortunately, the complex nature of the hospital means that you have to have expertise in certain areas, whether there's one patient or there's 1,000 patients. So in rural communities, people do multiple jobs. In the last two years, our result, our work resulted in a decrease of operating expenses of $2.2 million. But this effort hasn't stopped. We continue to look at everything we can. This month, we've decreased our medication list, so we'll be spending less on medications. We're also looking in every nook and cranny so that nothing goes to waste. The little boxes, the red boxes that you put needles in at the hospital, they're very expensive. We've got one in every single patient room, but we don't use every patient room. So those type of things are being sought out to cut costs and save money. So, all right, I'm going to stop, and I'm going to let Tim go over the details of the financial request. We are approaching our two-year anniversary of when the consultant said we could no longer remain open. So we're going to continue to fight for this community, but we're losing confidence and we're losing ideas. So we want to cover the shortfall over the next two years and cover the vendor payables that we've been delaying because of our shortage of cash. After Tim presents the numbers, then I'm happy to answer questions.
Good evening, everyone. The funding request for budget year 2018-2019 for the hospital is $4,801,000. Included in that is the contractual service, which has been traditionally our funding over the last several years for $1,430,000, and that, of course, is to defray the cost of physician staffing in the emergency room. That number is included in that $4 million figure. In addition to that, we have some capital needs that, obviously, we do not have funds to defray, and the primary one is our chiller, which is responsible for cooling the majority of the square footage in our main hospital building. That cost to replace that chiller is $154,430, and with the approach of the summer months, that becomes very much on our mind. Last year alone, we spent in excess of $15,000 just in repairs to keep that chiller working. Of course, should that unit fail, you know, we're not going to be able to conduct business as usual or normal. In addition, we have a painting project that most of the exterior buildings are in severe need of a coat of paint and some sealing. We have some quotes for $50,000 to take care of that. The last few items have to deal with the funding of our cash shortfalls over the remaining period of time that we continue or plan to be operating in that location until the freestanding emergency room opens up at around the end of the year. Based on our budget for 2017-2018, we're projecting cash losses of about $177,000 a month. For the period of February through September, which is the end of our fiscal year, plus the additional three months for October, November, December to get us through the end of this year, we're projecting a cash shortfall of $1,414,000. Plus, the three-month brings us to $1,944,000. We are deducting from that cash shortfall our current cash balances, which at the end of January were $429,000, which is a cash request of $1,515,180. Again, that's to deal with the cash shortfalls from essentially February 1st through the end of this year. In addition to that, as I'm sure many of you can appreciate, we have been aging our payables and managing our cash very carefully. As of the end of December, we had approximately $1,188,000 in balances owed to vendors that were aged 60 days past due or older. That's essentially 90 days or older from invoice date, 60 days past due. We're going to have to deal with those, and we deal with those every day, but that's just a problem, it's just not going to go away. That is in addition to the $1,500,000. And as another project cost associated with what we're going to be doing now, between now and the end of the year, is digitizing many paper records that we still have on the campus. We're going to have to deal with that. Those records need to be archived, and they have to be in a form that can be easily searched and provided now and after the future, after the hospital should close. So in all, that brings us to the $4,801,000 ask, and with that, I'll turn this back to Ms. Doscher.
Do you have any additional?
Just answering questions.
Any council members have questions, comments? Mr. Roof?
Did you say the annual request for this fiscal year was, was it $4,300,000? Is that what you said? I couldn't hear you clearly.
Got that number? That's the budget number that we sent to the county yesterday, I guess was the deadline? No, today's the deadline. $4,800.01.
And one cent?
Or no, $1, sorry. Excuse me. Excuse me. Four zero zero.
I got a few.
Mr. Trapp, yes.
I have a question for the administrator. On the tax notices that go out, you have a line item of hospital, how much money do we collect yearly from that?
I don't know the exact number on that. I can pull that and get that information to you, though.
Uh, I'm sure, I think it's a surplus each year, 'cause I know it's not exactly a million dollars that we give the hospital.
I think it's, I think it's 1.2 is what we've been contributing.
No, what do we draw in from the taxpayers?
Oh, I'm, I'm not sure of that number. We'd have to ask finance.
'Cause it should be a surplus building each year, and, uh, I don't have a problem, or we, we buy, we spend five or six million dollars on land. I don't have a problem being on this for the hospital to service the citizens of the county until the new emergency room open up. So if it come to a vote, uh, my vote is yes.
I'm being told we don't have a lot of surplus, about $122,000.
Uh, could we get the normals for the last maybe five or 10 years, or how much we done took in?
Yes, sir, we can.
For, for the taxes.
All right, any other questions, comments? Mr. Pauli.
Ms. Dosh, thank you for being here, and thank you for everything you do for the hospital. I just have a few questions. Is part of the building, which is the old surgery area, has been locked off due to black mold?
Um, I am not aware of any black mold being identified in our hospital. It is closed off.
Okay.
But, uh, I, I think I would know if there was black mold back there, and I don't think that was...
Um, is it true that the, the building usually floods when it rains, and if no one is there to put towels down, that it floods the floors?
Um, there are some parts of the hospital that, that do take on water. Yes.
Um, is, how often is EMS called to the hospital to perform services?
I don't know that number, but I can get that number.
And, the last question. We have a CEO, a COO, a CNO, a COO, a revenue cycle company, an accountant, and a financial law firm that we pay?
Um, I think all those would be correct, yes.
Okay.
We pay an accountant to do, to do the audit. There's not another accountant besides that.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Douglas?
One thing, um, in the budget, when we voted on the budget last time, we agreed to give the emergency room the same amount of money we gave them the year before, and that was $1,080,000. Uh, I understand recently someone told me that the, the hospital, instead of using all this money for the emergency room, it was being used somewhere else in the hospital to pay all the bills. Is that true? The money that we gave, we gave solely for the emergency room, but yet that money's been used in other places in the hospital to pay all the bills.
Um, I, I'm, I'm not aware of, of a specific designation of that funding. I mean, there's never been a designation when I've been there, um, but I, I would say if, do we, do we spend more than a million dollars in charity care and bad debt and write-offs in the ER? We do, but we don't take the check from the county and, and put it right to that charity care.
All right, any other questions or comments?
All right, so, um, one thing, I'll just say that, um, and I appreciate very much, Ms. Dosh and, and hospital board members and others who are here, uh, for coming and, and presenting the information to us tonight. I had a meeting with the administrator, and, uh, our administrator that is, and, uh, Ms. Dosh and Ms. Fantry, the board chair, um, about putting this request on the agenda, as oftentimes we'll, we'll do before we put something on the agenda, have a meeting to discuss it, so we know what it's about. Um, and, and I think one thing that came up in, in that discussion, um, and I think where I'm at on it right now is that I think it's very important that we continue to provide care to the citizens of Fairfield County until the new facility is open. Um, but at the same time, I think, and others think, and, and we've had a little bit of discussion about it, but it's really been preliminary to this point, um, that, that the citizens of the county, um, also, if, if we were to provide any more funding to the hospital, need to have something, get something tangible in return for that, um, just based off the, the funding that's been provided over the years, and, um, you know, everybody's obvious, aware of, of the wind down now and transition that's happening. So I think at this point, to provide any more money to something that we know is in a transitioning process such as the hospital is, um, we need to make sure that the citizens, again, get something tangible in return for that. So what came up in that discussion was, uh, the potential of, instead of the county just giving money to the hospital as it has in the past, and again, I understand and support the calls, um, that we instead actually purchase the hospital's property, uh, to be able to get something tangible in return for it. I think there's a few positive things that that does for us, um, most importantly, protecting the property, um, down the line to make sure somebody that we wouldn't want to get ahold of it gets ahold of it. Um, so there are some things there I think we might be able to work on and do. Um, we're gonna go into executive session tonight and discuss that proposition, um, in terms of a contractual matter if we do decide to, to do that. So just wanted to share that with everybody and say that's where I'm at on it. That said, again, we very much appreciate you coming and speaking with us tonight.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes, just a few more items. The groundbreaking ceremony for the Broad River Water Project that the town of Windsboro has undertaken, uh, is gonna be held on February 28th at 10 o'clock at the corner of Jackson Creek Road and Corona Drive in Windsboro. I encourage all council members and, and others from the public to attend. That's a big project that the, uh, town has undertaken to provide a good, steady supply of water to the, um, to the county, and hopefully have a long-term benefit to the county. So again, I encourage you to go celebrate, uh, them, with them on that groundbreaking. Next I have, and I want to introduce, Ms. Barbara Wilder and Mr. Gary Wilder of Perfect Provisions Incorporated, a mobile soup kitchen that they're looking to serve, uh, our citizens here in the county.
We wore our festive aprons that we go out. We wanted you to see it. What it is, is Jesus' heart, and Jesus is at the top with the twelve disciples around His heart. But, um, my name is Barbara Wilder, and this is my husband, Gary Wilder, and we are the president and the vice president of Perfect Provisions Mobile Soup Kitchen. And I just wanted to tell you a little bit about ourself. Um, we are ordained evangelists, and I served 22 years in the Army, and I retired 2003. Then I started working for Novant Health as a surgical tech for 10 years, and in 2016, I just quit because I wanted to do what I love. My husband, he worked at, um, Pet Dairy for 27 years, and he retired in 2016. So, um, mobile, um, Perfect Provisions Soup Kitchen is a mobile soup kitchen, and we currently have two food trucks. We have one in, in Charlotte, and we have one in Windsboro. And we serve in Charlotte three times a month. We serve across the street from the women's shelter, um, across the street from the men's shelter, and we help accelerated ministries evangelize their neighborhood because they have a lot of underprivileged, uh, families in their neighborhood. And what we do, um, we take out a hot delicious meal. We never take out sandwiches or anything like that, and we always hear the homeless tell us, "You feed us our heavy meal," because we take out fried chicken, mashed potatoes, green beans, rose, and during whatever season it is, we serve hot chocolate or coffee or just cold drinks during the, the summertime, 'cause it'd be really hot out there and they'd be dehydrated. And we started feeding at Finley Park, um, three times since we've been here. All together, uh, we fed last week, uh, at the, uh, Community Food Bank, but we didn't get a big response to that because people really don't know that we're here. But we wanna start feeding in Windsboro, and we do have two locations already, I mean, two dates set up for Windsboro already, the 16th of March and the 30th of March, and we're gonna be serving at, um, in Rose's parking lot on 321. Um, I have a little bit of notes here. Perfect Provisions started in, uh, September of 2011. We actually prayed a whole year before Perfect Provisions actually got started, so we actually was feeding about 2012. And so we feed about 400 people in North Carolina, and, uh, it's been 120 here in South Carolina. And we wanna let you know that we are very excited. We can't wait to just really get boots down and just start it because we love Perfect Provisions, and the Lord gave Perfect Provisions His name. Perfect because He's a perfect God, and provisions because He have all the provisions. So, um, when we go out also, like in Finley Park, there's actual homeless people sleeping in tents and in blankets. So we normally give them a personal hygiene bag with, uh, a washcloth, toothpaste, toothbrush, deodorant, and some body wash. Sometimes they have razors in it, and, uh, we actually had Duke Power, they gave us like 500 of these that they made up, um, as a donation, and they have really been a blessing. But we need people to word them out, to let everybody know that we're here. We need donations. We need men clothing. Men normally like to give out their clothes. They wanna wait until something come back in season again or, in style again before they give their stuff out. We can get women's stuff, but it's hard to get men's stuff. But, um, we need gently-used clothes, shoes, blankets, whatever. We needed comforters, sheets, um, toys for the children, because, um, I know for a fact, when we go to the women's shelter in, um, North Carolina, there's a hundred homeless children there. And, um, they often come into our prayer tent, and they ask for a home. They, they say, "Can you please pray for us for a home?" So, we hear their stories, we hear how they got homeless, and, um, we just love what we do. And, uh, Honey, you have anything you'd like to say?
Uh, yes. Well, uh, here in, uh, South Carolina, we're just getting started, so just knowing the little bit that we know about Windsboro and Columbia, there's a lot of homeless people here, and we're actually in need of, uh, monetary, uh, finances to help us grow, 'cause food and, um, clothing and donations is actually our hugest expense. And we found out, you know, that Windsboro has a lot of poor around the community as well, so we're actually looking to grow and expand our ministry here in Windsboro as well as other places in South Carolina. And we're actually, um, we're trying to look for a commercial kitchen. My wife does all the cooking for here in South Carolina in our home, and if we had a commercial kitchen, it would really help us to get our food prepared versus having to do it at home all the time, 'cause it is a huge, huge endeavor to do that.
Right, and then I can do like five turkeys at one time if I had a commercial kitchen, because we really feed them a huge holiday meal. I mean, they get the works. So, um, we are really happy. I'm glad, Honey, that you brought that point up. And we wanna let you know that any money that's donated, nobody gets a salary.
We're a nonprofit.
We are a nonprofit organization. All the money go toward food and, uh, just running the, keeping our trucks up. And thank you for the opportunity, Council, to speak.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could just make one quick comment?
Mm-hmm, sure.
Those are my neighbors, the Wilders, and I'm here to tell you she can cook. I've been... Thank you for what you do.
All right, and would like to also say thank you so very much for the ministry that you're sharing, that you're bringing to Fairfield County. The need is, is everywhere, but thank you for bringing that here. I have, um, the information now, I would like to get your information. I'm gonna pass it around, and I'm gonna encourage the community to get involved, because we're supposed to help one another. If we say we love, we put it into action. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, is that everything?
Yes, sir, that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. We're now down to clerk the council's report. Glad to see Ms. Davis has something for us tonight.
Probably don't wanna hear it. Um, you have before you the updated board and commission vacancies report, and it's also broken down into your district. I've been speaking with most of the board and commission directors, and they've asked me to express to council their appreciation for any assistance you can provide to fill the vacancies.
Thank you very much. Now down to second public comment session.
We have six speakers tonight. First, Alyssa Smith, speaking on county road issue.
Um, a couple months ago, my husband and I bought, um, this property, and we were hoping eventually be able to build a home on it and retire. Um, we went and we tried to get a 911 address, and we were told that the road that our property is located on is not a county road. Um, so they told us pretty much that we were trespassing. Um, this was something that we thought could possibly be an issue, so we discussed with, um, our insurance company. They guaranteed us legal access to our property. Um, we even contacted all the property owners around us, um, to let them know of what our intent was, um, to build and have power and stuff like that. We all drew up our own, well, most people except one that I know of contacted us back, and out of all those people, all but one were in agreement. We drew up our contracts or our documents for, to grant the easements, everybody for their own properties. We had the power company come out, we all took off work, met to get this started. Um, when we all got there, the property owner, um, at the beginning of the property, uh, told us he was sorry that he had everybody come out, but he had changed his mind, and he didn't wanna sign the easement, uh, because he had spoke with his son, and his son said, "Well, Dad, what is it in, what's in it for you?" And because he didn't see anything in it for him, he didn't wanna do it. Now, my issue is, is the road is clearly shown on every map that I've ever been shown as a road, not as property. Um, it's been maintained by the county for a very, very long time. I don't know why the county would maintain a road if it doesn't belong to them, but now we're running into issues where we're kinda out of standstill. So I'm asking the county to please help us to come up with a resolution to fix this problem.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Nathan Smith, speaking on the county road issue.
Hello, I'm Nathan Smith. I wanna thank you, um, council members, for everything you do. Um, just like my wife said, um, we bought some property to build a retirement home here in Fairfield County. My realtor, um, the real estate lawyer, my title insurance company, all claims the property we have has access on a county road. From doing a little bit of research, I found out the county's been maintaining it for over 20 years. Now I feel like I'm being held hostage, because when I tried to get my 911 address, um, the clerk told me I was trespassing and that I had no access to my property. Now I'm here to speak for two people, neighbors on the same road that aren't here. One of them has a home, has been paying taxes, but he can't get an address. I don't understand how we could jeopardize safety. Uh, if something were to happen, I just don't know, the, the liability on every part, that is what, that's what troubles me. It's liability on me, it's liability on the county. It's an issue that needs to be resolved. I just, I'd like to put this on the agenda, and, and I'd like to contact everybody involved and get them here to speak about it, 'cause something that needs to be addressed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Jeff Godby, speaking on county road issue.
My name's Jeff Godby. The road we're talking about is off of Lewis Door Road, it's North Spring Road. Um, I've owned property on this road for, uh, right at 10 years. The entire time I've had property, the county's maintained the road. I've always thought it was a county road. I didn't realize it wasn't. My concern is, between my wife and I, we have four children, four sons. We camp on the property, we hunt on the property, we play on the property, we have campfires, we ride four-wheelers. If something were to happen, I'd like to be able to call 911 and tell them where we are. And until the county takes ownership of this road, I understand that, uh, that can't happen. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Shirley Green, speaking on the county.
Shirley Green, District 2. Let's build something. Can we qualify for a... Can we qualify for federal and state grants to build a justice complex? Have you explored Plan B in your efforts to improve and expand Fairfield County office space? Relocate the courthouse staff during renovations of the current courthouse? Have you considered phased development of a Fairfield County governmental complex? Have you really done the math? How much debt can we really afford? Let's build something. Let's explore a five- or a 10-year transparent construction plan. Begin construction with the parcel land near the gazebo here in town. The building could house the courthouse staff during renovation of the courthouse. Renovate the courthouse. Return the staff to the renovated courthouse, then transition the police department to the new facility. Build Phase Two of the complex to house other departments. The buildings could easily be connected by breezeways, and the cost and the transition would be spread out over three to five years. Then what happens to this complex, since renovation costs are said to be prohibitive? If we fail to plan, we plan to fail. Please prevent, present a viable option to Fairfield County citizens. Next, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Goins. I heard that she recently held a town hall type meeting for her constituents. I encourage others to do the same. It is always important to have open dialogue. Open dialogue is necessary for inclusion and transparent governance.
Next speaker, Mr. Jeff Schaefer.
It's like a double play. I'll make it quick. First, this Band-Aid thing with the hospital. They had a consultant tell them they're going to close up. Did I hear that correctly? Close them up. I'm sorry. You folks haven't done the job you're supposed to do. I'm a businessman. I'm also a board-certified orthotist. I own the surgical supply company. My dad was a nursing home administrator. My wife's a physical therapist. I speak from experience. Top of that, I retired when I was 42. I'm pushing 70. I was successful in business, for two reasons. I kept my word, and I did the right thing. That's how it goes in business. Everybody here who's in business knows that. You either get your act together and do the right thing, or close up and take a walk, because you're not doing the right thing. Band-aids are one thing. You can't even put stitches in a man who's sitting there three hours. I don't know where that report came from, and I won't go into any further detail about that. But if one of the citizens vote, I vote, close it up. I mean, we gave it enough money. And your point was well taken. You asked about all these people they got working. What about their salaries? Have they given up a salary, taken a reduction? That might be a qualified idea. Sorry, I got all hyped up for the moment. I don't mean to take it out on anybody, but you have some serious problems here. We're not, we're not taking action. We're not doing the right thing for everybody here. EMS? Yeah, give them more money. And congratulations on coming in first place. I'd love for you to come in first place at my home when we call you on time. I know you can perform the art, but can you get there quick enough? Those are the things we're all interested in. And I'm almost running out of time. I wanted to say a couple other things, but once I work myself up, I'm useless. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council. I appreciate it.
Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on pass.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway. Always gift these tough acts to follow. But anyway, let's move on. Pass. This is a bit of an unusual topic that we haven't discussed before in these chambers. And it's come to my attention, personal attention, that when the state legislator, legislators produce legislation that severely impacts Fairfield County the most, we've passed on commenting on that and getting discussion going early. We passed, for example, on the Base Load Review Act. And who paid most dearly for the Base Load Review Act? Fairfield County, in higher electric rates, much higher than the other utilities across the land. Who paid the most when they failed to do a real pension reform? Fairfield County. And you can look at some of these other things that they have passed. Who pays the most when you pass a gas tax that everybody pays the gas tax? Fairfield County, because it takes a larger percent of the average Fairfield resident, percent of their income to pay for gasoline. Next up, we read in the state newspaper, another stick it to Fairfield County, in my opinion, legislation. On 223, there was an article of a proposal to eliminate eventually the sales tax exemptions on groceries, utilities, healthcare, and other necessary survival items. Where the bottom income groups, which we are below average in Fairfield County of the state, feel the biggest brunt of that pain of raising your grocery prices by 6%. You feel that pain. And guess, guess who benefits from this? This proposal is designed to lower the top income tax rate for those at the very top. So the person making a million dollars comes out way ahead in this deal, pays a little more for groceries, gets a whole lot of money back in state income tax. The person making less money, middle class below, we get stuck. We get stuck with paying more for our income just to survive. I urge you to read this article, make your own decision, but to me, it's just plain nuts. And I'm not passing on it this time.
Thank you.
That concludes segment two.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bright. We're now down to county council time. Anyone have anything for discussion? Ms. Goins?
You want to go ahead?
Mr. Roof?
I'm going to go ahead.
Y'all don't fight over it now.
I'll let it go.
Ladies first. You want me to go?
All right. Just a couple of things. I support trying to keep Fairfield Memorial Hospital open until the new proven ER is open. But, you know, I struggle, we just continue losing money. But I don't want our citizens not to have an emergency room until that happens, if we can work that out. But I'd like also, you know, if we do, if we can provide that until the new one comes on, we'd like some financial report monthly from somebody from the hospital, if we do do that, so that we're updated monthly on what's going on there. Also, I've had requests, and I've called Davis Anderson several times to get litter pickup on roads in the county. And I was informed by him, and I'd like him to elaborate that, on how much is currently picked up now on a daily basis, which kind of blew my mind, but it seems like it hadn't been touched. So I'd also like to try to put together through the whole county, added volunteer days or to communicate with all the citizens throughout to organize road pickups for our volunteers, plus what the county currently does. I think it would improve when we bring in people for industry, to bring in new citizens, and they see much cleaner county. I think it'd just be, it would be great. Davis, would you elaborate on what you were telling me about what the county currently does?
Not a problem, sir. Councilman Roof called me today to talk about litter pickup in the county. And what we do, we have a litter supervisor that works with three state inmates, what we call them state employees, that actually work for the county four dollars a day picking up paper. But during the winter time, which is now, we also have our grass cutters, which is two hourly-paid employees and another six inmates that pick up paper all the time. What we do, we are picking about, up about 120 to 140 bags a day during this time. And it's, the quicker we pick it up, stuff is back down. If you call, we'll pick it up. We don't mind, we just don't go out when it's raining. But we're picking up roughly 140 to 120 to 140 bags a day, with three crews going out every day. And we actually worked this Saturday doing some, doing some litter pickup. So if you have any problems with litter, you take down this number, it's 803-815-6331, and just tell, tell the staff what road you need cleaned up. And we're more than happy to come get it cleaned up for you. But litter is a big problem in Fairfield County. We just need to make sure on our side of the county that it's not blowing off our trucks, but also the citizens, when we're taking it to the recycling centers, that it's not blowing off the trucks also. But we definitely are picking up a lot of trash in the county.
Thank you, Davis. And can you imagine what it would look like if they weren't picking that up on a daily basis? But I'd just like for us to try to organize, to get some volunteer help too, that, you know, I know there are a lot of people that are concerned about it, and encourage people to take care of our county. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roof. Ms. Goins?
Right. Good evening. On the litter situation, it's bad, but people do that. But I would like to see in Fairfield County, some signs go up with some fines implemented. And those areas that are heavily littered, put up some cameras of some kind maybe, and impose those fines to the max. We're not going to litter Fairfield County. This is our home. They can trash their area, but not in Fairfield County. And it, all of it does not come from outside, it comes from people in the county. So the same thing applies to everybody if we want to keep it clean. Second thing I want to say to the Bryce Wells. Where is she? I'm looking, I'm looking. Congratulations. I know you're in a very difficult place. I understand your vision. I'm excited about it. There've been so many years that we've tried to do things in the West Side. Many good businesses who had many challenges, unnecessarily things happened. And I want to say to the council team and administrator, thank you for supporting this. I appreciate that. Been a long time coming to see something really good happening on the West Side. And if there's anything I can do to help you, to encourage you, when I looked at your rendering, my heart just pounded, because I know I can just imagine what is yet to come. And this is a great thing. So thank you, thank all of those that came to support you. The next thing I want to say, thank you to our team leaders, our departments. We had a community meeting on the 17th. I want to thank Clerk of Council Davis for putting that together for us, for so many coming out. And just want to mention them, because when people do good things, we'd like to acknowledge that. To Jason Taylor, County Administrator, Davis Anderson, Deputy County Administrator, Chief Rick Gibson from the Sheriff Department, Mike Tanner, the EMS man himself, Director, Jason Pope, Fire Service Director, and Phyllis Watkins, Director of 9/11. And they came out and they gave information on exactly what they do, how they do it, and they were there to answer any questions. We found out, and now there's been two community meetings, we found out what happens, we have not done enough advertisements so that everybody knows, we're not getting the message out, that everybody knows that the meeting is being held in the community. Anyone is welcome to come. So we're going to work on that, and we're going to push it, and you're going to be hearing about the next upcoming meeting, which will be in three months. And that will be at the Recreation Center by Lake Monticello, at Lake Monticello. But want to encourage you to come out and share, and we have people like Perfect Provisions, and you hear about this, come and let the community know, this is an opportunity for us to get to know what's going on, who's doing what, who do we contact in case we need something. This is what it's all about. Collaboration goes a long ways. And that's how we began to work together. So I want to thank all those persons. Also, he wasn't able to be with us this second time, our team leader, Billy Smith, but we want to thank him just for who he is. I just want to say thank you. He's an aggressive young man, but he is a good team leader. So I just want to say thank you for what you do for us. Also, the water project, Town of Windsboro. I don't know if anybody here tonight, but boy, when I saw the work started on West Side again, and the pipes and things going down, I'm just overexcited. I'm overjoyed, I cannot wait. I wish in some way when the first water rolled through, I could hear it. But I, I mean, I am excited, I am thankful, I thank God for the opportunity. It took a long time for us to just get to this point, but we're getting there. And if we keep pressing together and keep working together, keep being open-minded, we can do even greater things. And I'm going to always say, the best is yet to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goins. Anyone else? Well, I'd like to ask, just if anyone on staff knows anything about North Spring Road and what the issue there is?
Yes, we do. And we've had several of these road issues come up lately, and we're going to be, I have met with Tommy Morgan, our attorney, I've met with Phyllis Watkins, I've met with Jake Gaston, and our new Community Development Director. We do need to look at not just that particular road, but roads in general, how we treat this common drive policy. There's some situations, I think, that are detrimental to both the citizens and to the county. There's some situations where we're forced to take roads and maintain that we really do not have full legal right-of-way and access to, and that's the situation they're running into with that particular road. We have maintained the road, we do not own the right-of-ways, the power company needs to run power to this particular home, and they don't have right-of-way access. They typically use our right-of-way, but we don't have right-of-way on that road.
So how, do we know how, I mean, it was stated that there were other homes on the road, and how they get power?
I'm not quite sure the exact way the power's run on that particular road. I'll have to go back and look at it. But there's a number of issues that we can discuss in a future date on that, with that particular road, and roads in general, that we need to bring to you all in a more comprehensive policy proposal.
And do we know if, is that road a paved road, or is it just gravel?
It's gravel.
Okay. Well, I appreciate, and I think we do need to look at the policy from the overall perspective, because like you mentioned, we found a number of these roads that the county's been maintaining that, in my opinion, in some cases, we shouldn't be. Because it is just, it really is just a driveway going to one person's house, and that's a nice setup for them, but the rest of the citizens shouldn't be paying for it, I don't think. And then we run into this other issue where really a road is kind of, or a common driveway at one time is kind of taking the place of a road. So we just need to figure that out. That said, I don't want to slow down progress on this one. I think we need to get this cleared up right away, as soon as we can. So whatever we can do, if you all would, would work with the folks out there and make sure we can get done what we need. And I don't know if maybe the person who's holding things up, if we told him we'd stop putting gravel, maybe that changes mind. I don't know. That might be an option too. So I just want to make sure we address that issue as soon as we can, because it is a problem. All right. Anything else? All right. At this time, we will take a motion to go into executive session for three items tonight. We've got, we got three items tonight. One is a legal matter, update on litigation against SCANA, S-C-E-N-G, in reference to the abandoned VC Summer New Nuclear Project. Item B is a proposed contractual matter. This is discussion regarding the potential purpose of real property identified as Fairfield County TMS Number 126-03-01-001-000. And C is a legal matter, receive information regarding pending litigation from a former employee. We've had a motion and a second properly made. Those in favor? Those opposed? Now an executive session. Thank you.